Livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors.
The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Since 1974, Chuck Anderson Ford has proudly served the community's automotive needs. From new and pre-owned vehicles to parts and service, they've been there in the past and they'll be there in the future. Visit Chuck Anderson Ford today. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Recording in progress.
All right, it is 6:00 PM and I call our city council meeting for March 3rd, 2025 to order. We will begin with an opening prayer by Pastor Mark Krenz from Mount Calvary Lutheran Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, who holds in your hands all the might of man and who alone governs all things in heaven and on earth, we give you thanks for the many blessings that you have shown our beloved city. We humbly beseech you to graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, and may all that receive your authority to govern bear it according to your command and for the purpose of glorifying your name. Enlighten and defend all who are gathered here this evening, granting them wisdom and understanding that their discussions and decisions would be made high in purpose, firm in faith, and unwavering in duty. That all your people may be governed in righteousness, quietness, and unity through Jesus Christ, your Son, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Mark.
Thank you.
Back one too far. All right, if we could have the city clerk deliver the roll call of council members, please.
Councilman McGovern?
Present.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
At this time, I will recognize visitors who may wish to speak to the council. I remind our visitors that this time is reserved for public comment addressed to the city council. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Any agenda item which has a public hearing should be reserved until the public hearing is opened and comments on such item will be taken at that time. I believe Mr. Logston would like to address the council.
Can I ask the city manager a question? Or is it just the city council?
This is only time for comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Comments, okay. On September 11th, I mailed a certified letter to the city manager. And I haven't seen her name. On April, on May 27th, there was a large burn off in my backyard, less than 50 feet from my house, and it smoked the heck out of my house. I had to wash my condenser four times and then inspector told me that I'm gonna have to have it completely washed again, the gutters, all my, all my ductwork cleaned, the plenum and everything, which cost five to $10,000 because it hits fire. And the city was told of all this. And Mrs. Mize and Thompson came to my house. She took, they waited 10 days to come to my house. And he had it all cleaned up, his fire pit and everything, all cleaned up, everything. And the day after it was cleaned up, she came and she took one picture, went right to the spot, took one picture. How does she know that? Because he says this is he's never talked to him. And she went down there and then she took two shots of the neighbor's fire. And then she come up on my deck, looked around and talked to me. And she didn't want to hear nothing. She didn't want to see my pictures. She didn't want to hear nothing about my neighbor. She basically took advantage of me. Because I had mental problems from car wreck. I had PTSD bad. And it's been, what, nine months? And I wrote my state representative, he's never said nothing. I wrote the city manager, I don't know if she got the mail. I'd like to know if she got the mail, because if not, somebody else got it. And so, that's all I got to say, really. Oh, yeah. And my neighbor, who you know, who you know, 17 years ago were on a fencing home. And it was contaminated with flying ants, carpenter ants. And he put them in his backyard and covered them all up. And the fencing, he said his works paid him $25 a truckload to bring them home or to dispose of them. He disposed of them in his yard and they're still there. Can I show you pictures?
Sure.
Okay. You've already seen them, right?
I'm not sure. I can, I'll see them when you show them.
Well, did you get a package with about a dozen pictures in it?
I don't know until I see what it looks like. I may.
There's the tree that fell. There's the tree he left rot for 10 years. My kids could not go in the backyard for five years because the limbs fallen off. There's, it fell. There's his pit. And here is the fencing from the church he worked at.
Tim, where do you, where do you live?
Pardon, 1506 Reed Court. It's a, I built the first house there 25 years ago. I was gonna build it on my neighbor's lot, but then David Adams and builders and the drain plat people told me that it wouldn't hold a walkout basement. So I had to buy the next lot. And then I had to get a, pay $1,500 to get electric box moved so I could put my driveway in it. And four years later, they, the city lets my neighbor put in a walkout basement. And it drains all on my property. It's flooded out my basement three times. But that's 10 years ago. I bet that I took care of. Now it's the ants and the mold. His house is so moldy, it's been that way for 10 years. And there's no way you can fix that if you let it go that long. And she didn't want to know anything about that. She didn't want to know nothing. And she, when she came to my house, she didn't tell me that she was closely involved with my neighbor.
Who's your neighbor?
You know who my neighbor is.
I'm not sure. Tim, I.
He's your number, he was your number two pastor and he retired in August.
Okay. I know who you're talking about now. And I didn't realize, I didn't realize you lived up there, but.
I wish I did.
Last time, I remember you lived down by Rainbow Slade. That's been a long time ago.
We built the first house there. I got the choice of the first lot and I picked the best looking lot. And I was told we couldn't put our house on it. And then four years comes in and the city says, oh yeah, he can put it. They've got it figured out. And he's got a berm in the back that runs all this water down to my house. And his house is elevated 18 inches. They did all this to, you know, get away with putting in a walkout basement.
Can I keep these?
Yeah.
Okay.
But what I would like for you to do is find out if your church did that. Find somebody that can get rid of them. I mean, all my trees I've had to cut down. I just, my walnut tree, I spent $960 on to get the bugs, all the limbs cut off and it's full of. I mean, I've been battling for 10 years, 10 years.
So what are you saying? These came from?
Your church paid him $25 alone. He said from his job. And I've worked at the Teensters and they have no wooden fence at the Teensters. And I've had people say that that was there about 22 years of them fencing. And they're getting ate up.
I will look into that.
I would just like them gone.
Yeah.
I would like that whole mess cleaned up. I mean, it's clean, that's cleaned up now. It was worse than that.
Okay. Well, I'll check.
And his house has been molded for 10 years. Six years ago, he had his daughter up on the second floor scraping all the black off and washing it off. The second floor is starting to come back. And it's going down beside the neighbors. And this fire was 20 years of leaves and grass clippings he piled up. And this was all reported, but she didn't want to hear it.
Well, your five minutes is up, but I will definitely look at this and I'll, I'll get with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
We've known each other for a long time. Okay, any other visitors who'd like to speak? Seeing and hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting of February 18, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 18, 2025.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting of February 18, 2025, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Minutes are approved. And now I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular, or the special city council meeting of February 21, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes of special city council meeting of February 21, 2025. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes from the special city council meeting of February 21, 2025, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Minutes are approved. And now I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it has been presented.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
All right. First on the agenda tonight is a presentation for the Communities for All Ages. And Ms. Laura Mize, our neighborhood specialist, will present this presentation before the council.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I'm super excited to bring you an update of our continuing work with Mid-America Regional Council and the Communities for All Ages program. This is a shot of our wonderful senior center, which is becoming a shining star in the region as far as senior centers go. So the Communities for All Ages program, it seeks to train cities in serving residents of all ages. There we go. And what we do is we learn how to use an age lens in considering policy and decision making in different areas of focus. These are some representatives from other cities in the program. And they educate us and provide us tools on improving the quality of life for residents in our communities. And one excellent example of that is this booklet, Remodeling for Accessible Homes. This was a publication created by Mid-America Regional Council in collaboration with many of the communities that are participating. And it includes tips and education on how to make your home more usable for more people of all abilities and ages for a longer period of time. To include like zero entry doorways and things you can do in the kitchen and bathroom to make them easier to use for children and people seated in a wheelchair. It's an excellent publication and we were excited to be part of it. Mid-America Regional Council brought in an expert too that spent a lot of time with the representatives from the different communities, educating us on, on how to help guide people in this area. And we've adopted an ordinance that will waive a partial permit fee for developers who implement universal design in their builds. So we have implemented this already. And these are the areas of focus that communities are trained to look at and to apply an age lens to. The public outdoor spaces would apply to parks and our built, our government buildings, housing and transportation, social involvement, community services. We look at all of these things through an age lens to see, are they meeting the needs of people at every age in our spectrum? And the framework is set up in a bronze, silver, and gold model. And bronze is just awareness of how to use an age lens. The assessment level of silver goes very in-depth. It's a deep dive into what is your city doing? How do they do it? Do we already implement an age lens? How well are we doing at that? Where can we improve? And then the gold level is when you adopt a plan or implement a strategy that applies an age lens. And for Excelsior Springs, we did that with the community, or with the Parks and Recreation 2021 Strategic Plan. They had language in there that included all ages and abilities specifically for the Boundless Backyard, which is now underway. Super excited about that. This next slide shows where all of the participating communities are and what level they're at. And quarterly meetings of representatives from each of these communities are a lot of fun. We share ideas. And every good idea that we've implemented came from some other community who tried it first, except for Silver Prom. That was ours. So we've been sharing that idea with others. These are maps that show why area agencies on aging decided that a program like this would be important. It shows the difference in the percentage of population 65 and older, first looking at 2010, and then the projection to 2030, and how that's going to affect our communities at a county level and a city level. Pulaski County is where Fort Leonardwood is located, and they employ thousands of military aged personnel. So they will probably always be in the blue level there. But you can see the change in counties and how our population is going to be. We're gonna have more and more residents who are on the older age of the spectrum. So we want to make sure that we're looking at an age lens when we make policy decisions, that will they be meeting their needs. So this is a picture of when we received our gold level recognition. And these ladies were part of the Communities for All Ages program from the very beginning. And we've had a great journey with Mid-America Regional Council, and we are enjoying continuing that partnership. So once you receive your gold recognition, it's kind of like graduation. It's a beginning, not necessarily an end. So based on how well the task force model works with Thrive, I implemented that with Communities for All Ages. And we created a task force called ES Aging Well. And we are made up of members of the community who are either in 65 plus or they're professionals who work with older residents from the hospital, from our service agencies and nonprofits and the library. So it's a great group of people who are meeting every month to discuss how can we improve quality of life for the older residents in our community. So some of the things that we're focusing on, one of them is technology. The senior center was awarded a $5,000 grant to provide technical, technology education to the clients there. And Jeff Barge has taken the initiative to get some training through AARP and the Oates Program. If you ever get a chance to look at Senior Planet on the AARP website, it's outstanding. And there is a lot of excellent technical education there. So he's using that to help train his clients at the senior center in how to use technology well. We're also going to be offering the Aging Mastery Program at the community center, probably late spring in partnership with Glenn Smith of Elder Law. And that's a 10-week program that trains people in how to basically age well, how to handle your affairs as you age. Home repair and maintenance, I think we do very well in this area. We've got our own minor home repair program where we have set aside funds to assist residents who are in need of minor home repairs or modifications. Say you've had a stroke or something and you need some modifications in your home. We partnered with Rebuilding Together Kansas City and Northland Neighborhoods to provide a program for our residents that can help with this, with these kinds of needs. I mentioned universal design. That photo on the right, those are all grab bars. And the area of universal design has come a long way in helping people make their homes more functional and able to be lived in for a longer period of time. A grab bar doesn't have to be an ugly metal thing like you see in a hospital bathroom. Those are all functional and beautiful. And so this booklet is just really an excellent tool that we've handed to people. We've been able to print it off and hand it to people who are making these decisions and shows them how to make universal design changes in their home. In the area of social wellness, we're super proud of our Silver Prom and excited to have another one coming up, April 12th. I put some flyers on the back table. And I hope all of you council members who are 65 and older or 60 and older will ask your sweethearts to Silver Prom. We have a wonderful time. And so I'm gonna be, I have already presented on how to do a Silver Prom to some of the other cities in the area who were interested. And I'm going to be presenting again at the Age Positive Conference on May 2nd, doing a breakout work session on, on how to do a Silver Prom. Ours, because of student council, ours was a success. Once we got them on board, it just really came together because they know how to throw a prom and they just did an outstanding job. And the band was great too.
Absolutely.
In the area of transportation, we have an excellent transportation service, but we find that a lot of our residents don't know about it. So getting the word out about our transportation department has been a challenge. And so that's what we're doing. We don't really need necessarily to make improvements in what we offer. We just are really trying to get the word out and what's available for our residents to use. Our local farmer's market is helping us to address food insecurity in our downtown area. Harvesters also works with the Good Samaritan Center to provide fresh groceries that are available to our older residents that live down here and experience the food desert that we have. So those are great partnerships. We're working on, Jesse Hall is working diligently on bringing a meal and a visit to Excelsior Springs. And we are excited for that to be coming here in the coming months. Having a meal brought to your home may be the one thing that, that gets you up and about and dressed and taking care of yourself, knowing that you're going to have that visit. It also allows someone to put eyes on a person who may be at risk every day to see that they're not declining. And if they are, then we can notify family. As I said, we could not have gotten our gold recognition without the Parks and Rec Department and specifically the language that they put in their 2021 Strategic Plan. Boundless Backyard is in my backyard and I'm super excited about this park progressing. It's gonna have a butterfly garden and a playground that has equipment to accommodate different abilities. So we're super excited about that. And that is the spirit of what Communities for All Ages is really all about. Is making sure that we are thinking about all of our residents on both ends of the age spectrum to make sure that we're meeting their needs and improving their quality of life. Snow Angels is something that we have brought back. Jesse Hall, again, had done this for years at the high school. And we brought it back this year. And boy, did our volunteers get a whopper of a first experience with Snow Angels, but they did outstanding. We had 14 official volunteers that shoveled for 30 residents who requested help. But because of the Excelsior Citizen being such an outstanding tool in our community, a lot of other connections were made. And people who requested help, got help through, through the Excelsior Citizen. So we're excited to continue Snow Angels and we're, we've learned a lot of lessons from this first year. It'll be even better next year. So I want to thank council for supporting our participation in Communities for All Ages. It's definitely benefited our community and I'm excited to continue to work with the other communities that are participating. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this program.
Laura, I know that Rebuilding Together had a specialized focus on the grab bars and keeping people in their homes and independent. Is that still the case or is that?
As far as I know, they do modification, yes, because they just did some modifications for Mr. Moon.
Okay.
At his home. And Northland Neighborhoods participated in his remodel as well. So that was an exciting one here in our downtown.
Not a question, just a comment. On the demographic shift page that you've included here, kind of by opening, when you see that, 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 that growth, especially through the midsection of Missouri, they're 25% or more, 65 years or older. Yeah, I'm feeling that. And also, just, just congratulations because Excelsior Springs is one of those gold communities, so.
Yes, yeah. We, we're definitely a shining star in the region when it comes to this program, for sure.
I would be interested in some of the details of the demographics and the projections of that, because you would think, you know, younger folks are moving into the zip code. So I'm just curious, what was the baseline of their projections for aging population versus backfilling with younger people that are moving into?
Yeah, I can look into that. I know that we got this data from AARP. So I will look and see how they source that.
Very good. And if we're like most nations, we're in a zero population growth. And so there's, there's more people growing older than there are more people being born.
What, 10,000 a day or something like that, go to 65?
10,000 a day, turn 65, yeah.
People a day retire in the US.
Yeah.
Not necessarily retire, turn 65.
Turn 65, yeah.
Yes.
Someone retired long before that, so those are fortunate enough. Jesse Hall's program, meals and a visitor order. Do you know if he's reached out to click any senior services for funding?
He has. And he's working with Mid-America Regional Council as well. So that's one of the great assets of Mark is they have partnerships in all of those agencies. So when Jesse came with the request of, okay, how do we do this? They were able to get him connected with, with others as well. And I believe that the last report that we got from Jesse was, was really encouraging as far as the funding. We've had a lot of people step up to volunteer. So as far as handing out meals, that's not an issue. It's funding the program is what he's focusing on. But we've had a lot of people, kudos to our community. You know, we always do have a lot of volunteers step forward whenever there's a need.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I believe it was today Jesse, Jesse sent a email, little update. And it was about transportation and saying, but not, not for Meals on Wheels, just transportation, I think for the senior center.
Colony Plaza.
Yeah.
Yes, specifically from the colony.
I didn't understand that since Excelsior Springs Transportation, their route is Colony Plaza. So because, because he gave them his phone number, so I didn't.
I'm not familiar with how that, because I think it was specific to the different classes, wasn't it? That they were offering transportation to the classes that were being offered, is that right?
They offer them to the senior center for lunch. And if, if that's what this was about.
Yeah.
And they, and they, and the transportation takes lunch off.
Okay.
If they're not able to make the arrangements or if they need an earlier class because we have so many transportation on our own service hours, that Jesse would figure out a way to get them there to participate in this class.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Laura? Thank you for your excellent presentation.
See you at Silver Prom.
Thank you. All right, number two on the agenda is consideration of fire training usage agreement. Resolution number 1554. And our fire chief, Joe Maddock, will present this resolution before the council. Welcome, chief.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Before you is a training tower agreement, which will be used by the fire department for when outside agencies wish to utilize our training facility that is under construction. The agreement's pretty straightforward, spells out date, time, how long they wish to use it for. As I stated Friday, we do not have a fee schedule put together yet, but we will get that put together before we rent it out. But we're just doing more research on that. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Not a question, but what a tremendous asset to have here in our community.
It's gonna be nice.
Yeah.
Especially when you figure what one costs to have manufactured and is basically, basically just a shell. And then what we have and all the props and everything that John has built inside it, yeah, it's quite the place.
Yeah. And I would think there would be some ancillary benefits too, for, you know, some of our previous conversations of having trouble attracting and attracting new firefighters to have a facility like that.
I think it'll definitely be a benefit.
Certainly puts us a step ahead.
Sure.
And this is John's second building. He built the one at the Career Center also.
But it's.
Oh, really? Oh, really?
There's nothing like this.
No, it's much smaller.
But yes.
You said those, some of the trainees actually liked the tower in it better because it's just basically the tower, but he showed me all the bells and whistles on this thing the other day and I just went, wow, is there anything you did not think of?
Lot of it was suggestions from the guys. They didn't know how to put it together and then John goes home and stays up all night long to figure out how to make it work and...
After he feeds a cow.
That's right, and then comes back and does it.
He's amazing.
Very good.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1554, a resolution approving the form of a fire training facility usage agreement and authorizing the city manager or fire chief or his designate to execute the agreement as contracting parties are determined.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1554, consideration of fire training usage agreement.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And next on the agenda is consideration of memorandum of understanding with the Excelsior Springs School District for the FEMA safe room. Ordinance number 25-03-01. And presenting this ordinance is also fire chief Joe Maddock.
Yes, before you is the MOU. This is a renewal from last year's agreement. The verbiage is exactly the same as last year's agreement. We will have access to Lewis Elementary though this year. All the particulars regarding the potential storms have not changed, so that's all the same.
Any questions from chief? All right, this is an ordinance and will require two readings. An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding with the Excelsior Springs School District. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-03-01 to second reading.
I move we take ordinance number 25-03-01, consideration of memorandum of understanding with the Excelsior Springs School District for the FEMA safe room to second reading. Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-03-01 and ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding with the Excelsior Springs School District.
I move that we approve ordinance number 25-03-01, consideration of memorandum of understanding with the Excelsior Springs School District for the FEMA safe room.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance number 25-03-01 is approved. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Number four on the agenda is consideration of special use permit for short-term rental at 817 Rowell Street. Ordinance number 25-03-02, presenting on behalf of the Community Development Department, is our Economic Development Director, Melinda Mahaffey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Community Development Department has for your consideration this evening, two actions that were brought forward from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week, the first of which is a special use permit for a property at 817 Rowell Streets. And this is a special use permit because it's outside the tourism area and the downtown area. So anybody wanting to have a short-term rental outside of those two districts does need to get a special use permit. This is a special use permit. The property is located well outside the 1,000-foot separation standard for any other existing short-term rental and the property owner can meet the standards that are required for a special, a short-term rental. And the property owner or the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending this special use permit for a two-year time period, at which point would come back for a final consideration. Would answer any questions you may have.
I know during the planning and zoning, there were some neighbors that expressed some concern regarding the parking, but if I understand correctly, the property owner lives not far from there, offered his personal phone number to address those concerns.
He did, and this particular property actually has two separate driveways and can actually maintain the parking on-site.
Okay.
Anticipated anyway.
And it seemed to me, if I recollect, the complaints were primarily about properties on down the street, the parking on the street.
It is, that's, there happens to be a curve right there that makes it a little bit challenging to make that curve when you have parking along one side of the street. And that was the concern of the neighborhood and we are having those conversations.
Good, good. All right, if there's no further questions, an ordinance approving a special use permit for short-term rental in District R1, single-family residential district at 817 Rowell Street, City of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-03-02 to second reading.
Move to take ordinance 25, tacot 3, tacot 2, consideration of special use permit for a short-term rental at 817 Rowell Street.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-03-02, an ordinance approving a special use permit for a short-term rental in District R1, single-family residential district at 817 Rowell Street, City of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri.
I move we approve ordinance number 25-03-02, consideration of special use permit for short-term rental at 817 Rowell Street.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And that ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of amendment to section 400.240 of the Municipal Code regarding accessory uses, ordinance number 25-03-03. And again, Melinda will present this ordinance to the council.
Thank you, sir. The Planning and Zoning Commission also took up a case on an amendment to accessory dwelling units that, a number of years ago, we approved accessory dwelling units inside of the R1 and R1A and R2 districts, but we did not include the agricultural districts. And so what we're bringing back to you tonight for consideration is the addition of adding accessory dwelling units to be allowed inside the agriculturally zoned properties where there is a primary residence. And then adding one additional item, just to be very clear, that a detached ADU has to be built behind the front building line of the principal structure. So those are the two changes to the code that are being requested this evening of you. Would answer any questions you may have. This came as a unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to you.
So in essence, this would require all ADUs to be behind the front line regardless of what zone they're in?
Correct.
Okay.
And the caveat is there has to be a dwelling unit, not just agriculture with a building.
You, correct. So you have to have a primary residence, it has to meet the minimum building standards and then the ADU can only be a certain amount of, must be smaller than the primary residence and has to be built behind that if it's not attached to it.
And part of the conversation at P&amp;Z was that ADUs are going to become more and more sought after with an aging population and it's always nice to have a mother-in-law house so that she lives there, not in your house. I'm kidding.
That's okay, I agree. I don't think my children want me to move in with them. And we're seeing generational living, so we're seeing younger children who are staying at home longer.
Right.
And the opportunity for that or to move in with a grandparent and live there just to be present in case the grandparent needs something. So we're seeing a lot of that and you're seeing a real uptick in that in today's, in today's building standards.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from Melinda? All right, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 400, zoning regulations of the Municipal Code by amending section 400.240, accessory uses. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-03-03 to second reading.
I move that we take ordinance number 25-03-03, consideration of amendment to section 400.240 of the Municipal Code regarding accessory uses.
Second. Second. Who got the second there, Shannon?
McGovern.
Okay, okay.
Councilman McGovern.
Gotta be quick.
Yeah. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25, wait a minute, we need to vote on the second. Roll call Shannon. Jump the gun.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And now, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-03-03, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 400, zoning regulations of the Municipal Code by amending section 400.240, accessory uses.
Move to approve ordinance 25, tacot 3, tacot 3, consideration of amendment to section 400.240 of the Municipal Code, excuse me, regarding accessory uses.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And ordinance number 25-03-03 is approved. Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Number six on the agenda is consideration of client service agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC, Resolution number 1555. And our city manager, Molly Gover, will deliver this resolution to the council.
Thank you. As you know, our insurance, health insurance plan expires April 1st and we are switching insurance carriers this year to Cigna. And as it is, the out-of-pocket was increased from something more than what our employees were experiencing in the past. And so this is a companion program that just is an additional fee in the premium that lowers that out-of-pocket cost to, in the neighborhood of what our employees are experiencing. So when we change plans, we're saving about $300,000 and this is a consultant's fee is the way this, the broker or provider will be compensated for bringing us this companion program, which I would consider like a gap program. And their fee is $36,000 to offer this gap program. And then they also are disclosing what the commissions are, but the commission is buried within the premium cost itself. So we will not have an additional $14,000 on top of the premiums, just the 36.
Any questions or comments from Molly on this resolution? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1555, a resolution approving the client service agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1555, consideration of client service agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution number 1555 is approved and that brings us to remarks and we'll begin with our city manager.
I have an email I got today that just tells us that Excelsior Springs Hospital has decided to not accept proposed changes to their operating agreement with North Kansas City Hospital and so it will be a changed circumstance in their relationship, so.
Okay. Comments from city council, we'll begin down on this end with Councilman Rennie.
I have no comments for now.
Okay. Councilman McGovern?
Congratulations to Nate Williams for receiving the Missouri Park and Recreation Association Distinguished Associate Fellow award last week at their annual conference. Nice to see all the work that they're doing being recognized statewide.
Absolutely. I believe that deserves a round of applause. On the speech? Talking pole. From my vantage point. All right, Councilman St. John, what say you?
This week, I've had the opportunity to visit with a couple of folks who've moved into our neighborhood recently, within the last few months, actually one of them within the last few weeks. And of course, I always ask, what brought you here? Because they're from other towns. And the fact that they kind of like where our neighborhood is located, it's still kind of country, you know, we're kind of out there on the edge, but, and they're also close to everything. But the other thing that keeps popping up is that whole small-town feel. And this is something that I'm struggling with because I know we want to move forward in development, in businesses and housing, but how do we balance that and still keep that, you know, that small community, that togetherness like we have when, you know, we have people that need something shoveled off and people said, yeah, okay, I'll do that, you know? How we keep that momentum going? And I know that's a fine line. Melinda, good luck.
Well, I think we've had discussions, that's part of the challenge of our co-plan is to remain special or unique while allowing for growth and planning for growth. All right. Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
I was trying to make you think about it.
No, I would just echo what you said, Reggie, and I think we've heard some of it here from Laura Myes and others that we've heard is it becomes a deliberate intent. We want that look and feel and so building that infrastructure, even though, yes, you see the growth, I think having that deliberate intent of keeping that small-town culture is fair enough to who we are. And then just on a personal note, just wanted to thank you, everyone that came to celebrate Mom's Life on Saturday. It was very meaningful to have you there, greatly appreciate that.
There's been many conversations, it was, it was a special kind of event.
Yep.
It really was.
And Stephen has musical talents.
Hey. I'll bring my tip jar.
There you go.
That's wonderful. And Reggie, did you say that your neighborhood is attempting to be edgy? Is that what you said?
No, no, we're just on the Jutana.
Oh, okay. Edgy Reggie. That's bad.
They give up your day job.
Well, Councilman McGovern stole my thunder on recognizing Nate, so again...
I take back what I said.
Thank you, Nate, for your excellence and some of the comments that the Excelsior Citizen reported on was that the award is for his exemplary leadership, innovation, and sustained commitment to our community and his efforts have resulted in transformative programs, facilities, and outreach. And the first thing that Nate did is said, well, it's, awards are awkward and it's not all about me, it's with this wonderful team I have and we know that, but everything rises and falls with leadership, so thank you.
Very much so.
And I have the privilege tomorrow morning of attending the Parade of Hearts 26 Reveal at NBKC Bank in Kansas City and I understand that I will be shown which heart Excelsior Springs will receive. And matter of fact, right before council meeting, I called our former mayor, Sharon Powell, and I said, how does this work? I've never been to one of these. She said, well, you, I said, do I get to pick out her heart? She said, no, you'll be shown, you'll be ball and told which heart you're going to receive.
You know, it's like, I want that one.
Yeah, but she said the cool thing is you, more than likely, I get to meet the artist and have a picture with you and the artist and the heart. So I'm pretty excited about that. about that.
Yeah.
Do we know the placement of that yet?
Well, last year, we placed it at the end of Elms Boulevard, thinking that they like for you to place it where it can be most visible. And first year, it was on the other end, close to the Elms, and we thought moving it more visible. So that's our thought, but if you have any other locations?
Well, and there was some complaints about the placement last year because it blocked the view of the fountains, and it caused some near accidents.
Really?
People looking at it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I've shared about it and, and, because we had mentioned that maybe placing it out on the west end of town, and she, she suggested the Excelsor Springs right there across from Price Chopper.
Yeah.
Everyone drives past that, so that would be a great place to put it.
Or Reggie's neighborhood.
There you go.
And here's what I know about, it has like a location device on it, so if someone were to tip it or take it to a new location, it, it can be found.
Good.
So, yeah.
So it's got, it's got...
Yeah, I think they learned a few lessons of trying to hunt those down.
Yeah, just because it might be, I don't know, well, you can drive up to any of the locations it's been, so I don't know, but...
It's chipped.
Yes, chipped.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got an air tag, huh?
Yeah.
I think part of the standards for those locations from going with Sharon to those is that they want you to go park and get out and take pictures because you follow the app, and they, there's people that will literally go around and take...
Yeah, it's like Deo-cashing.
So the location there, I just don't think you'll get into that landscape.
It works if you, like, we did a photo there for the West Side CID that created. You park in the shopping center above, and it's not too hard to walk down to it.
Okay.
And so that would work. So it's a little bit of a, not much of a hill, but a little bit of a hill.
Okay.
It could be done.
And if it happens to, to be heading out of town on a flatbed, we've got our flock cameras that can locate that, get a license plate number and chase it down.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one last comment for the record.
Okay.
This past Friday, the police department had a very nice retirement reception for Cheryl Hunter, who had almost 40 years of service as a communications officer to the City of Excelsor Springs. And I think that's rather noteworthy.
Very much so. Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, if no further comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
So, Javon's gonna go take the docs to be grown, and it looks like, did you get a haircut there too?
That's a great, whoa. That was a big man.
Marcia's gone and not able to cut his hair, so it looks like he got a haircut, but not that he likes.
[inaudible]
Well, we can't wait till she comes back because no one cuts his hair.
I did this, Marcia, 22 years ago.